Good evening. We are here to open the meeting of the Dartmouth Select Board. We're going to move into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21, for October 20, 2025. At 5:00 p.m., we will be moving into room 309 at the Town Hall Building. We will be discussing the following. The Director of Public Works contract, Mass General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We're also going to discuss the acting administrator of assessing MOA, Mass General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a3, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with union personnel. When complete, we will return, hopefully as close to 6:30 as possible.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Next, please stay tuned for the Board of Public Works.
Good evening. I'd like to convene the Board of Public Works. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion to open the meeting.
Motion made by Ron LaBelle, seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, note for the record that the Dartmouth Board of Public Works will convene into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 30a, Section 21, on today, October 20, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. in 309 of the Town Hall Office Building at Florence-Silcombe Road. The Board of Public Works is meeting jointly with the Select Board to discuss the Director of Public Works contract pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 30a, Section 21, subsection small a, parentheses two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel and to conduct bargaining, collective bargaining sessions for contract negotiations with the Director of Public Works. Do I have a second to go into executive session?
Second to go into executive session.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. How do you vote?
Aye.
Vote aye. We will convene, reconvene into open session at the completion of the matter that the Board of Public Works is discussing with the Select Board. Thank you.
To order the regular session of the Dartmouth Select Board. Just want to remind everyone that our meeting is being recorded. And we're going to open our session. And as we do, I'm going to ask Rob Almy. He is the Chair of the Board of Public Works. And he is going to open the meeting for his board as well.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to convene the Board of Public Works. We have all three members present.
Want to be in compliance. All right, before we start, I'd like us to rise to pledge allegiance to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands. One nation, one government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we stand this evening, I want to call to mind, of course, our veterans. I also want to ask your thoughts for the passing of Manny Branco, a longtime Dartmouth employee. And for the firefighters of District Three and other units who responded to the plane accident on 195. Let's keep all of them in our thoughts. Thank you. All right. We may be moving a few things out of order, but there are some things that we know are going to be sort of short and sweet. So we're going to start out with our change of manager application for Acme Liquors. So come right up to the mic and tell us who you are.
Good evening. I'm Sydney Prokos from Vieira &amp; DJ in Filippo, an attorney based in Easton. And I work with attorney Matt Porter, who you may have corresponded with. We represent Onvy Enterprise LLC, doing business as Acme Liquors at 722 Dartmouth Street. I'm here before you tonight with Viabav Ripapara, requesting an approval of a change in manager of Acme Liquors. The current manager of the store is Hatish Kumar Patel. And the new proposed manager is Viabav. Viabav is already an owner of the store, so he's very familiar with the operations. He's alcohol tip certified, and there's no issues or violations since he's owned the store. Notably, this is the only change being made to the business, and it's strictly internal. There's no changes at all related to the ownership, external business operations, location, hours of operation or layout of the store, just a change in manager tonight. And with that, any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. Any discussion on the matter before us? Seeing none? I'll ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
You very much.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Continued success. All right. We're going to go into item B, which is, I'm going to ask Representative Markey to come to the mic. We are in receipt of letters from Representative Markey regarding two bills that he and others are putting forth to the state. And we've invited him here tonight to hear about those and to leverage our support behind them. Mr. Markey?
Sure. So there's two bills can be easily to remember. House Bill 999 and House Bill 1000. The first one deals with the CSOs really out of New Bedford that have created a large problem for a lot of the aquaculture farmers. We have created this new economy, I would say, in the last 15, 20 years, and really enhanced it. There are, I believe, there's 393 private oyster farmers in Massachusetts. It encompasses about 1,400 acres, produces almost $60 million between the sales of the products and from the related economy. And so what's happened is, is there's been a change in the federal regulations, and which we're advocating for with the federal delegation as well, in which they have changed the dynamic of Buzzards Bay. And they have created prohibitive zones and conditionally prohibitive zones, and then approved zones. Problem is, is most of these oyster farmers are located just north of West Island. And I think it's called the Nantasket Bay. And then also, we have some in the harbor here in Dartmouth. And the regulations essentially require the oyster farmers to stay closed for 10 days after a significant rain. So as of today, Scotts always will not be going for at least 10 days, unless there's nothing going on. And what's that resulted in is he's been only able to harvest approximately, like 15, 20 days all year. It's really gone to a point where it's crazy. So there's kind of a short-term plan and a long-term plan. And obviously, everybody knows that the CSOs cost a huge amount of money. So much money that it's impractical for municipality to cover. So what I propose is a commission that would get a whole bunch of the communities together, as well as ANF from the state, Environmental Affairs, as well as from MDA, which is the agricultural agency of the Environmental Secretary. And have everyone sit together and try to figure out mechanisms for this, to pay for this. It clearly has a huge effect on New Bedford. There's about 1,300 episodes of a sewer CSO. And 512 last year came from New Bedford, which is 39% of the entire state. So we really need to figure out a mechanism to this. And I think Dartmouth has a huge investment in it. I think every town on the South Coast does, particularly from Fall River to Wareham. So I do think that it's an important part of it. So I'm hoping that you could support this by writing out to the chairman of the committee, the Environmental and Natural Resource Committee, and let them know the importance of this and how it can be a long-term solution. In the meantime, hopefully, our delegation can be successful trying to get the regulations changed to some degree. But that's my problem, and I'll be working on that. But I think your problem in the end is our problem. And that is, a significant amount of money needs to be spent for that. So that's one thing. And the other one is, I don't know. Doesn't seem like it's a big deal, but when you look at the numbers, it's a pretty big deal. And I think anyone who's sitting here, anyone who's watching on TV or anything, has seen an incredible growth in population of deer. And a few years ago, I was speaking with a local farmer, and they talked about how much money they were losing as a result of the deer coming in and not being able to dispose of the deer. And there are old laws on the books in Massachusetts about farmers' ability to kill deer that are eating their harvest. And as we look at our world today, and we look at how everything is kind of being developed, our rural areas back in the day, for all of us, except for Cody, was Dartmouth. Now those are suburban areas. And as this suburban spread goes even further into rural areas, we're marching onto farmland and into kind of the wilderness more and more and more. And that is getting us in closer contact with the wildlife. And one of that is the deer. So a couple of things have happened in the last 40 years. Is one, it's about half the people are hunting now. There's incredible limitations on that. There's incredible limitations on the farmers who are unable to successfully dispose of, without a huge expense. Now, because houses, for example, John George is right on Allen Street and Slocum Road. It's almost impossible for him to be able to shoot a deer that's eating his corn because it's within 500 feet of a dwelling. So that becomes a problem. And then we have the certain number, who can do that, which is another archaic regulation. And then what you can do with the remains of a deer from that. So hopefully, we can get another group of people together on a commission throughout the state who have a significant impact, who have been significantly impacted by this. So one group, as I explained, is the farmers. Another group is public health. Massachusetts is the third highest for Lyme disease in Bristol County and Plymouth County. They accounted for over 252 and 300 emergency room visits in 2023, which is a huge impact on our, just in our ERs, to have people coming in for Lyme disease as a problem. And so we got the farmers, we have healthcare and public health. And the third thing that is really troubling is the accidents that are occurring. And people are totaling their vehicles, getting injured and killing deer. And it's kind of ironic that this is probably the best month to have this meeting, to talk about it, and hopefully warn people. If you have a chance to go up Route 24, a quarter of all deer that are killed, are killed in a year, are killed in the month of November. So be careful driving. But in Westport had 370, I think it was 373 deer collisions last year. That was the highest in the state. Middleborough had 272, Dartmouth had 102. So that's one every three days in Dartmouth. One almost every day in Westport on average. Clearly, it's not every day, but it means there's multiples that happen in the short period of time when they're out. So point is, we need to get people to sit down. The only way things happen in Boston is if we can get all the stakeholders together, just like we would do with the CSO, hoping to be able to do that with Fish and Wildlife, have that with the environmental groups, have that with the hunters, and also with the farmers, and maybe we can find a solution to this. So I'm hoping that you could support that as well. And educate the public. If they want to call or write, they can do that as well to the chairperson of the Environmental Resources. Both of these bills are before them. If you have any questions, I'm happy to ask. I'm sorry, I ran it on too long for everybody else.
Not only was this good information, Representative Markey, but also the information that you sent to us to look at, especially on deer collisions common in Massachusetts. Here we are in Dartmouth, and right next door, Westport's one of the highest. Yeah. Anyone? Chris O'Neill, go ahead.
Let me see. Thank you, Representative Markey, for both of these. Two huge issues for the town. The coastal water CSO is something that we've talked about in the past as a board, and that we have a vested interest in, in trying to mitigate some of the damage that's caused by this outfall problem. Like you said, this is not just an New Bedford issue, and they obviously do not have the means to handle this all by themselves. You know, the issue goes back to the 17 and 1800s in the city. And I owned a couple of buildings that actually had both stormwater and wastewater in the same pipe. And it's not inexpensive to separate those. I didn't find that out until we looked at doing it. And we were fortunate to be able to do it in one instance. But it's a huge problem. The, you know, just the sheer volume is incredible. Especially today, yesterday, the storm that we had today, if you look on that website, the numbers would be staggering. So that's a great bring to the town. Deer? If I had a penny for every time I settled a total claim on an auto because of a deer strike, and not just in New Bedford, but north end of, I'm sorry, north end of New Bedford, throughout Dartmouth and Westport, it's, this is a crazy month for them. My daughter actually totaled her car with a deer about 100 feet from the house. So it's a huge problem and something that really needs to have a significant amount of time and energy put into trying to cull the numbers. So thank you for bringing that forward also.
Yep.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
I'm just basically saying this. Both bills deserve our support. And there aren't enough oysters in the world that could clean up the stuff that's coming out of New Bedford.
Well, one of the things that is interesting is we've passed a law regarding the notice requirements. And this has really came about as a result of the notice requirements because we have to, I think it's within 24 hours or 48 hours, Chris has to provide notice to all the players, whether it be either the beaches, Jones Beach, Anthony's Beach. The city has the same responsibility. And it wasn't until years ago where they would test it, send it away, and then come back, and it would be like a week later. And then everyone's already been swimming in it anyway, so what does it matter? But the idea being that I think this, we need to deal with it in the long term. We also need to deal with it in the short term. Hopefully, we can do that.
Thank you. Mr. Telebaum?
Chris, tremendous gratitude for bringing this to the front. Coincidentally, this afternoon, I was at the SMass, UMass Dartmouth facility. My brother was able to put it, he has a home in Florida, and he does a lot of work with the Ocean Conservancy. And I didn't get a chance to tell you this because I just got here from the meeting. So I want to discuss it with you more at length. But just a quick aside, the Ocean Conservancy came up to consult with the faculty at SMass, UMass Dartmouth, in terms of collaborating because they have the same giant issue down in Tampa, Tampa Bay, that we have here, and it's just bigger there. And the collaboration- And the collaboration that is available to us, not only was UMass-Dartmouth to do some of the research and all the other players, Buzzes Bay Coalition, et cetera. I think that it all addresses our own water quality issue here in town and in the area. And the way we're going to solve this is with a regional approach as opposed to the time. And one great approach, of course, is to approach it from a financial angle, which is that the oyster farmers are going out of business. And that's a way to attack the problem because it's a financial one as opposed to, in addition to just drinking clean water, or clean water, period. So I look forward to working with you and these groups to try to make this, continue to make it a regional issue because the days of vilifying New Bedford because they do nothing is not fair. They do spend a lot of money. It's just that it'll take ten or fifteen years to solve the problem, and they don't have it. The mayor doesn't want to charge his residents. It's not just a city problem, although it's their, it's their old sewer system. So we need to attack it regionally. I think, I give tremendous amount of credit to it, credit for getting this thing together, and look forward to our team here supporting you and working with it, try to get some short and long-term solutions to the problem.
Thanks.
Thank you for doing it.
And again, we all support that. And there isn't a time that when I show up at John George's farm, that John comes running from the back telling me how many deer, how many acres of his cornfields have been eaten by the deer. And it isn't just his cornfields. There are others, others in Dartmouth, there are in Westport, they surround us. It's something that needs to be, needs to be talked about.
Rabbits had a better year than the deer did this year. Rabbits did well, too.
Yeah, I guess, a little bit. But we need to talk about it, and I appreciate what you've done. Thank you. It's not the most exciting stuff to talk about, but I think it's the real practical stuff of what government's supposed to do, so. All right. Thanks again.
Thank you. Representative Marky, we've actually drafted in advance of this, we have two letters, a letter for each of your bills in support by the Board of Selectmen drafted by Cody.
Madam Chair. Make a motion that we sign the letters of support for the two items that Representative Marky has proposed.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Passed unanimously. We will now sign them.
Madam Chair, as an aside, the New Bedford CSO report is online for the storm ending today.
Thirty million.
The numbers are unbelievable. It's unbelievable. Eight hours, five million gallons, one million, two million, seventeen point six-six million gallons outfall.
One storm, one day.
Three.
What about two weeks ago, all the rain?
One, two. And all you have to do is Google a CSO discharge in New Bedford, and it'll give you the numbers. It's staggering. If you don't think it's a problem.
And as he said, it's extended for ten days, and in that ten days, the odds of us having another rain possible, it just keeps extending it. So thank you. My interest in this bill is really because we're looking at a way to support those coastal cities who would not be able to, would be a financial ruin of them. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Guys, I appreciate it. Take care.
All right, I'm going to pass that down. And our next item is Dartmouth Veterans Advisory Board Appointment. We have James Tully here this evening. In your packet, you have the letter by Mr. Tully as well as the letter in support of Mr. Tully from Matt Boulay and the board. Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Just state your name and.
Stanley.
James Tully, 176 Chase Road, Dartmouth, Mass. I was, I was a board member for many years, and then I got off the board because I volunteered with the VA in Providence for a couple of years to help out with people in the House of Correction to help veterans for discharge. But I no longer need to do that, so I have time to give back to the DVAB, and I would like to do that.
Wonderful. And there was a spot open? I'm just curious, which was your branch of service?
I was in the U.S. Army. I was a field artillery officer. I'm a three-generation military. My father was a World War II veteran, and my daughter served in both Iraq and Afghanistan. So.
Thank you all for your service.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Fight to approve and second to appoint. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to jump from that. I'm going to go to the contract for the Director of Public Works.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Is there another appointment on here?
Yes, we're going to come back to it.
The veteran?
None here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Reappointments, and they're not here. That's okay. So in our packet, if you turn to page thirty-nine through fifty-four, we have before us the contract for Mr. Barber's position as Director of Public Works. Just for transparency, we have met with Mr. Barber and discussed the merits of the contract, his evaluations, our expectations for going forward. So at this time, pleasure the board.
Make a motion to approve the contract as submitted.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That being said, I do believe that the Board of Public Works, who has called their session, may want to speak on this matter.
Chair, Rob Almy, Chair of the Board of Public Works. Some people may be wondering why both the Board of Public Works and the Select Board are going to approve this contract. The Board of Public Works, because the charter gives the Board the responsibility to appoint the Director of Public Works, and the Select Board, because the contract is between the town, and so town corporate needs to approve the contract. So our Board has reviewed this, has recommended it to the Board, and we will approve it at our meeting Thursday morning. All right? We, I suppose, we could do it now. If we have a motion, we have a motion?
Motion to approve the contract?
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
That's it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contract's approved.
Excellent. I want to thank the Board of Public Works and Chair Almy about working collectively with our Board and going forth to offer our support for the Board of Public Works and the Director, Tim Barber, for the success of our Department of Public Works, which is very important to all of us.
Madam Chair, may I say that I think the Board takes its responsibility, as you have given us very seriously, given the scope of responsibility of the Public Works in providing both health and public safety services. And so we'll continue to do our best with you. We have lots of challenges in the future, and it's our job to work with you and other members of the professional staff to meet those challenges for the people, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, make sure, don't leave with us, though. Sign it.
Don't leave with it, but I'll give you this to sign. All of you can sign, including Tim, and then we'll need to make copies of it.
I'm reminded of a television ad that says, "Don't Leave Town Without It." I would also entertain, I think it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to adjourn. Hang on.
We have the efficiency study to discuss. Did you all want, that's up to you, if you all want to stay.
You guys want to stay for that?
They're going to stay for it.
We have at least two of our members that'll stay, so we will stay in session.
Stay in session. All right, then we will move directly into the efficiency study.
Yes. So I had, based on the feedback I had received from the Board, I did put together a draft scope of work for what I believe the Board is looking for in efficiency study at DPW that is, was included in your packet. I had obviously also previously emailed it to you. I shared that with Mr. Barber as well, and he actually has been soliciting proposals from other firms. I believe one just came in this evening. I will share that with the Board tomorrow, so you can see that. But if there's anything in there that you feel did not capture what you're looking for, now would be a good time. This is on the warrant as part of the capital plan for tomorrow, sixty thousand dollars to procure, to hopefully procure these services. So we want to try to move on that soon after hopeful approval at tomorrow. So now is a good time for us to finalize the expectations.
So I'll just run down the scope of services. We're asking the consultants, our consultant group, to do an organizational assessment, to do a staffing and workload analysis, division operations review, policies and procedures evaluation, townwide integration and structural review, benchmarking and best practices, final recommendation and implementation plan. And I have to, personally, I think number seven, the final recommendations and implementation plan is going to be key because I'm anticipating we won't be able to financially take on all the changes that we may have to make or upgrades we may need to make. So I'm happy to have that. On page seventy, fifty-seven and fifty-eight in your docket. Mr. Talabon?
I think that this document, put together by Cody, based on our request in the new contract that the Board of Public Works worked out together with our Board, is a, this proposal is a perfect example of what we're trying to do here, to be, to have a spirit of cooperation, collaboration, to make sure that the town and the department are working together. I think it's a fresh, new look at how we operate in our biggest department in town, and I think this would go a long way to get us in the most efficient manner because we have a lot of projects to do and a lot of work to be done with qualified people, that we need to do it in a way that's efficient and as inexpensive as possible. I congratulate Cody, Board of Public Works, and thank you.
Mr. O'Neill?
Madam Chair, I'd also like to extend my thanks to the DPW Board. They did not have to give us the time or even some of the input that we received in this contract this year. I've given this department a lot of scrutiny. I've been pretty vigilant on some of the things that they do, some of the things that they don't do that they should do. The fact that we've been able to bring both boards together in reference in this contract is pretty significant, I think. You know, as many will recall, last, I think it was last town, last year, we had to go to town meeting to try and interject some of the issues that were seen in the Board in the contract, and it was voted down. So the Board had that and didn't have to respond the way they did, but they did, which was great. Both boards worked pretty well with legal and the administration to come up with a contract that I think is good. I think it is pretty vigilant on the structure, the department requires training that hasn't been required in the past. We have some significant goals that we put forward that will have to, you know, be checked off as we go along. Some forward thinking is going to be brought back into the department, and I'm confident it will be, and we'll be vigilant in watching that. It, actually, some of these things do come to fruition. It's a very important department. This isn't about any particular individual. It's about the department head and making sure not only DPW, but every department head in this town knows that they have a contract that's meaningful, that has had a lot of scrutiny, that has outcomes that are attainable, and we're going to hold you to it. And I think that's important. But I'm satisfied with the way the contract came out and my Board's participation in all of this, and the DPW's agreeing to work with us to make this department the best it can be. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the efficiency study?
A quick question.
Yes.
The process of choosing the organization we use to do the study, how is that done and who does it, makes the choice?
We will likely develop a request for proposals that'll include this scope of work in it. We anticipate the cost being over fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So we'll procure those services through a competitive procurement, and consultants will have the opportunity to provide a response to that proposal, and we will internally review and choose the proposal that is most advantageous to the community.
Internally?
We will set up, yeah, an internal team.
Come before us at all in the choice, or maybe the ultimate?
The final selection will come before.
In a public meeting?
Yeah.
Great, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Almy.
We typically do have some review at the Public Works Board. However, I think for something that is this high visibility, if the town administrator would like to work with us to set up either a review committee or probably more focused a selection committee to interview and help with the selection of the consultants, I'm sure one of the Board members, the Public Works Board members would be happy to be part of that. And if the town administrator, if Mr. Cody, I mean, Mr. Hadad thinks that it's good to have one of you be part of that or any of the other town committees, by all means, you know, this is, if we're going to talk about restructuring or making significant changes to Public Works, we probably want to have a number of different sources giving us input all along the way, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I would vote to recommend the scope of work.
Make a motion to recommend to go forward.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Passes. All right. Thank you, Board of Public Works. Yes, I'm going to give you the opportunity. Oh. Yes.
I think one of the things that is pervaded between the meetings that the Board of Public Works has had jointly with the Select Board is the issue of the communication. And I was very pleased to see Madam Chair acknowledge Manny Branco this evening. Manny, Manny served as the Superintendent of Public Works for thirty-seven years, and I can tell you from my years, starting in nineteen eighty-one with the town of Dartmouth, that Manny was an exceptional communicator, both with the town administrator and the Select Board on many, many occasions. It's a trait that I think brought much success for Dartmouth. And with your new town administrator, and what I have heard, the communication that is going on with the Director of Public Works, I think that will be one of the biggest components to having us address what is coming in the future. I feel we've got some very significant Public Works challenges. These two individuals will be the impetus for getting to the Boards and having the Boards work together to approach these difficult issues. So I think we can all use Manny as a good example. Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. I think when I tour the present water treatment plant, Manny Branco was the director at the time of its inception in nineteen seventy-three, and he also brought our, his love of Portugal and the Azores to our sister city committees. So he was a man of many talents to the town. Thank you.
Excuse me. One more comment on DPW.
Okay.
Tomorrow night, there's a article regarding a five-member board for the DPW, and I'd like to make sure that the Board is, expresses their total support for this so that the town meeting members are understanding this is a, this is an issue that all of us, we voted on it, but the Board could express that same support.
Yeah, for the record, the Public Works Board has discussed and approved that for a number of reasons, not the least of which it means that we can have subcommittees, which, given the scope of what we do and how much work there is. the scope of what we do and how much work there is, is good.
Much needed.
Much needed. Everyone needs a break.
Yes.
So it would be nice. So to move from three to five, as you know, we'll take town meeting approval tomorrow evening, and then will be a ballot question in April of 2026. So it's a slow roll, but we're going to get there. So until then, if anyone's interested in being a part of the Board of Public Works, we highly recommend that you start watching the Board of Public Works meetings.
And we do meet early. I suggest at least one cup of coffee, and they're on Zoom, which makes it a little bit easier. With that, Madam Chair, if it's appropriate, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Public Works Board. I have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Back to our agenda. I'm going to pick up where we left off, which is item D. We have the Veterans Advisory Board reappointments. So we have both David Rucker and Jason Ray, and we have their information. James Tully was a new to the board or returning to the board, and these are two reappointments.
Motion to reappoint.
Oh, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. So we'll let the chair know and also Mr. Brulee know that he has these three members or be good to go once they're sworn in and all of that. All right. Next on our agenda is the Housing Production Plan update.
Yes, so our assistant.
Mr. Vitale is here.
Assistant Town Administrator has an update on that.
Gary, doing a hell of a job tonight. Good evening. Chris Vitale, Assistant Town Administrator. So I know it has been a little bit of time since I've been before the board to talk about the Housing Production Plan. So for the better part of a year, we have been working with Serpide as well as the stakeholder committee that the board established to start working through the different elements of the Housing Production Plan and ultimately starting to build some draft goals and finalizing the plan. So we've had three meetings to date. We have one more at the end of the month. At that meeting, we are going to be going over the list of draft goals. So I didn't want the meeting here in the next several weeks to be the first time I've come back to the board with an update. But at a very high level, like I said, we've had three meetings to date. We put out a community survey to get people's feedback on what they want to see and the concerns they've had. We've received over 400 responses. That's the most Serpide's ever received by a community. So there's a lot of really good input that's gone into the plan so far. In addition to that, you know, our committee consists of representatives from a lot of different town boards and committees, and we've started to have some conversations with regards to some of those goals and strategies that we're looking at. So some of the things that we will likely see in the final plan is recommendations on zoning implementation of 40Y, you know, the possibility of some 40R reforms. I think that's been discussed here at the board level. Dedicated funds for grant match, land purchases, looking at the state's Lands for Homes Initiative. In addition to that, also looking at, you know, what is considered a eligible project for the subsidized housing inventory, as well as continued support for the home rehabilitation program and home buyer assistance program. So those are some of the ideas that have come to us to date. The other one that I forgot to mention here is through the planning board, looking at some inclusionary zoning. So I know right now, the big discussion is, you know, what do we do once we get to the 10% threshold for subsidized housing inventory? You know, I think as a committee, we're also discussing, all right, we got there, now how do we stay there? So that's one of the things that has been discussed. But this evening, I'm really just here to give you an update on that, as well as provide the board the opportunity, you know, if there isn't any goals that I've listed, if there's things that you want us as a committee to look at as we start to go into the final phase of this project.
I'll just ask Mr. O'Neil, is our rep to the Housing Production Plan. So, Mr. O'Neil, I know that you represent us and represent us well on the plan, so what can you tell us about the work?
Well, from what I've experienced and been involved in, we've covered a lot of topics. Some are a little taboo, but others are a little more mainstream. You know, we're basically trying to suss out as much as we can when it comes to what the town wants to see and the town's opinion as to what they'd like to see, how they'd like Dartmouth to look in 10, 20, 30 years. You know, the information that we got back from Serpide on the potential growth in the number of housing units, that was pretty interesting, I thought. The participation on the, on the survey, like Chris just said, was pretty significant, which is a good sign. It means people are engaged, and, you know, the best decisions are when the most people are engaged and lend their opinions as to what they want their town to look like. So I think it's important work because you have to look at this in conjunction with your master plan, in conjunction with your, the housing plan. You have to get these committees together to make sure that everybody's being represented. So I think the work so far has been good. You know, I think you'd be happy with what the final report looks like, so.
Anyone else on the board with a comment, question?
For me, the list of goals actually included things that I wouldn't have thought of. Inclusionary zoning, I thought pie in the sky to hit our magic 10%. So it's nice to hear that that's in the Housing Production Plan a possibility, and then how do we maintain that? So.
Yeah. Yeah, no. I mean, there's a lot of good things here. There's also, you know, different goals that Serpide's going to bring to the table, recommendations from other communities. So we'll get a look at those here at the end of this month. The agenda's going to be posted later this week. And then the next time I'm before the board with this will be, hopefully, with the final plan and presentation for your endorsement. So that's it for me.
All right.
Isn't it kind of our best interest that we, we aggressive about affordable housing percentage because then we can keep control of our own development? And maybe, you know, whatever it takes to get that done within reason is important? Is that what, kind of what we're thinking that way?
Yeah. So, you know, like I was saying, so I think we're going to be through, I would say, the next year or two, very close to that 10%. Once we pass it, you know, our goal is to stay there through these various initiatives.
With the plan, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Wonderful.
Thank you. See you soon, but otherwise, we'll see you in a little bit to hear more about the production plan in another month or so. All right. Our next item is the Aiken House lease.
Yes. So I provided an update at the last meeting. We had issued a request for proposals to lease the Aiken House. We did not receive any responses. The current, the current group that leases the property, Dartmouth Heritage Preservation Trust, has an interest in continuing their lease. We have been working to try to come to an agreement on a one-year lease, which we feel comfortable doing without advertising, advertising as it would be in compliance with Chapter 30B. In going back and forth with Diane Gilbert, the President of DHPT, we have a hang-up essentially in the rent provision of the agreement, which is, you know, what we've consistently done across the board is a payment basically for rent, or they can provide a list of services that would be equated to a dollar value. We recognize that the Aiken House is very different than all of our other properties. So our valuation methodology was 25% of what we used for other properties, recognizing that the ability to have events there was limited. The DHPT, and Ms. Gilbert is here this evening, so she can certainly provide, you know, more info on her opinion on this, but she would like to continue with not having any rent payment or services required in lieu of rent. The previous lease was for $1. So again, this is a policy decision. This is really the last hang-up on the one-year lease. We've agreed that once we execute the one-year lease, we will work towards a longer-term solution that is viable for both DHPT and the town. But given that this would be very different from our other leases that we've been approving recently, it's something the board needs to decide if they want to move forward with or not. The, essentially, the rent is in the amount of $5,045.41, of which, you know, we would expect services in lieu of payment or any costs associated with the building. So insurance costs, cost for repairs, improvements of the building, cost for providing educational and cultural activities and programs to the public in the building would all, you know, count towards the rent. And then, like with our other leases, a report would be provided annually to show that those services have been completed.
All right. Mrs. Gilbert, or Attorney Perry, if you'd like to come up?
Good evening, members of the board. Madam Chairman, I'm Daniel Perry. I am an attorney with offices at 388 County Street. I'm also the Vice President of the Dartmouth Heritage Preservation Trust. I am, I have, I appreciate the opportunity to address this, this evening, although I express some frustration because I've been asking for a meeting for the board selection for five years without a response on the subject of the Aiken lease. I think that there's a fundamental difference in view about what the Aiken House is. It is a, we call it a cultural heritage center. It has, it's been, it's, for the most part, been restored to its original condition in difference, in different eras. And there's a lot of displays there. It is made available for, to the public on, very occasionally, and we have events there as well. The Aiken House does not have water service. It does not have toilets. It does not have sinks. It is not heated. It is not winterized, and it has never had a certificate of occupancy. It is not leasable space. It has absolutely zero value as a lease, as it leaseholds. It was no surprise to us when we didn't respond to the RFP that was put out there and no one else did. I think it's quite clear that no one has any interest in paying for the privilege of keeping the Aiken House going and providing the service to the public, which is essentially what we do. We just make it available to the public. We have events there. We've never gotten a nickel out of it. We poured thousands and thousands of dollars and thousands and thousands of hours into restoring it so it's available for the public. But it is not, it's not our office. It is not a place that we use, it is not a place we get any economic benefit from. I think it might be helpful to review the history of our lease negotiations. I mean, we started in about 13 years ago when, as President Whale, I appeared before this board, and I indicated that Whale, which had, which originally acquired the money with community preservation funds, wanted to transfer ownership back to the town and recommended to the town that it create an entity to manage the restoration of it and finish it and to oversee its use as a cultural heritage center. That's what we undertook to do, and in conjunction with the town, DHPT was formed as a not-for-profit to perform that function. At that time, the restoration was less than half-done, and we and DHPT undertook it and completed the restoration with private and public funds at a cost of several hundred thousand dollars. The original lease that we entered into with the town was for five years with payment of $1 rent, recognizing that we're, this, we're giving, being given the space to perform our function for the benefit of the town and not getting any economic benefit. We extended it one time for another five years and the same rent. In 2018, the issue of us paying for it and having an RFP came up under 30B. The Director of Assessing at the time made a determination that it had no economic value and therefore was not subject to Chapter 30B. And we again did a lease for $1. We've had some rough back and forth with the town over the terms of the lease since then, and now we are facing the prospect of being asked to agree to rather onerous terms that we did not, which were the whole reason we didn't make any response to the RFP. Let's be clear. Chapter 30B does not require, and that this be procured through a public process. Chapter 30B requires that the town determine the value of the property by calculating the fair market value of the lease over the entire contract term, and I'm quoting from the Inspector General's Manual on 30B. And for a lease, they suggest you use market rent data or even advertised rental rates if the number of similar properties on the market is sufficient to determine the lease value. Well, you can look for advertisements of space that does not have a certificate of occupancy, that does not have heat, that does not have toilets, and I suggest to you that you will not have any luck. There's no market. For that reason, because there's no market and because there's no value, it's not appropriate to try to do this through a procurement process, which, in which the town says, these are all the things you have to do, and you have to agree to our terms and give us a proposal. Remarkably, the proposal that the town included, included a lease which had a provision that the tenant did not have a right to extend, but the landlord had a unilateral, unilateral right to extend for another three years. In other words, the lease that we were asked to bid on said that the town, we only had got three years, but the town could make us continue for another three years and pay rent at its option. I've been practicing law for 47 years. I have never seen such a term. So I would, what I suggest I'd like to do is, outside of a procurement process, outside of the attempt to impose unilateral terms, come to an agreement about how we can continue to perform our mission, which is to make, in accordance with our original undertaking to the town, this property available for the public and continue to make sure it's, it perform, it is in good shape to have events there on occasion and, and to, in general, to do what we were created to do. And, you know, under those circumstances, I suggested it's not appropriate to impose, for some reason, the idea that we're supposed to pay $5,000 a year for it, regardless of how it's calculated or what it's supposed to do, because that has no bearing on what you're giving us. Thank you. Have it answering questions.
Yes. Mr. Hadad.
So just to clarify, we are not here this evening to discuss the RFP. We are not here to discuss the long-term lease. What is before the board and what was presented to DHPT was the one-year lease, which is the same exact lease that DHPT previously agreed to, with the exception of the rent provision, which we have never collected substantial funds for many of our properties. The goal is to get a guaranteed service to the community. We have no interest in collecting the funds. We want service to the community, so, and we assign a dollar value to that to ensure we're getting some service. So we, the, the RFP in the longer-term lease is certainly something we need to look at. And we can disagree on 30B. As the Chief Procurement Officer of the town, that's fine, that, you know, I have a different viewpoint. But we're not here to discuss the long-term lease. We're discussing the one-year lease, which myself and our team feel does fall under the threshold of 30B, and we're able to do it without procurement due to the value of the lease.
And all our other town properties?
Have this provision. Hence why it's before you. It would be, it's a varying policy decision, and at the end of the day, that's something that the board needs to determine if you want to vary from the policy.
Okay.
I would point out that other, the other town properties are all habitable space.
All have what?
Habitable space.
Okay.
Diane, he was pointing to Diane.
Right. I was just wondering, I thought Chris had a.
I'll go after Diane.
Diane. All right. Mrs. Gilbert?
What's your jump over to Pam?
Good evening, everyone. Diane Gilbert, President of DHPT. Yes, Dan is right. We've been at this, actually, it's more than 13 years. It's closer to 20 years that we've been dealing with the town with the Aiken House. But having said that, the latest RFP and the draft lease, as Dan indicated, we opted not to bid. And as he also said, nobody else bid. So maybe I would point out that if nobody else bids, including DHPT, you have this house that has been an investment in the town and has also received a measure of, a significant measure of success and support by the community, not just Dartmouth, but the surrounding community. And we will still, you know, yes, Cody's right. We're here to talk about the one-year lease. And the last thing that we corresponded on this evening, this afternoon, was that I suggested that we get our one-year lease because we have pressing matters before us with respect to the Aiken House, including a CPA project that has been approved pretty much by everybody who needs to weigh in on these things. So that comes up tomorrow at town meeting. So that's one thing. I have always overseen all of the preservation projects, repairs, restoration, making sure that everything is done according to historic preservation requirements. And I want to continue to do that because, yes, we do, it is a witness site to the revolution, which we feel is very important, especially at this time. But also, it's not just about events and our displays. It is about the house itself. And for us, and I will say for me personally, to make sure that this house continues to be viable and thrive for another 250 years after we're all gone is just as important as those events and those lectures and those displays and the education offerings that we provide to the public. And I would also say, with respect to Cody, sort of kicking this off about this one-year lease, the reason I totally reject the rent, not only the five grand that we have to pay for that would get increased every year, but also the reporting requirements and what, what is eligible to be offset from the lease and what isn't. And we have done everything about the Aiken House. The town has given us nothing but its support, which we appreciate. We're partner in that, we're partners in that regard. But our group is willing to spend more time being the stewards of the house and also making sure that with climate change and other things that are enemies to an historic house, which has no insulation, and I won't repeat what Dan told you, but it's an important historic building that's a study house in and of itself. That has inherent value to the town and to others who, who care about the Aiken House. And the, the rent provisions make no sense to me whatsoever. I thought it would have been as simple as, okay, we'll give you a report once a year. Because I guarantee you, we give to this house certainly more than $5,000 worth of services, as it is. So that's not so much the issue. It's having to jump through hoops that, to satisfy the town and its understanding and interpretation of 30B, which we continue to reject. So I ask you, if you could consider this evening to approve this one-year lease, which allows us to kick the can down the road to work out these details and to reach some longer-term agreement with the town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board members, I want to just call your attention back to the lease, which is in pages 30, starts on page 30. It does contain the information about the rental payment of $5,045.41. As Cody stated, that is a quarter of what the typical rent is of the other sites that we have, which would be the Russell's Mills Library/Schoolhouse and the former Southworth Library in Paydneram, the Dartmouth Cultural Center. Otherwise, this lease is exactly what Cody has drafted for the other two properties.
And what we, what actually Diane and I conversed with this morning was a willingness to revert to the current lease, or the lease that DHPT previously had, with the one exception of the rent. And so, and the idea is to try to get a one-year buffer while we figure out long-term, try to have some sort of support from the Select Board prior to town meeting. You know, the, the other terms are, were really updated and they're not of substantial change. Hence why we feel comfortable continuing the one-year for, under the current agreement. However, the largest is the policy decision of the rent. I mean, that, that's a, essentially something the board needs to take a position on.
And as you stated, it's not about collecting $5,000-plus dollars. It's about.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want the money.
Right. It's about offering the services. So if Mrs. Gilbert is saying that she offers more than that, than to fill out the paperwork necessary for the town, it would just be putting that information. And the more the merrier. What's not true?
If you read the language of the rent.
Yes.
There are certain things that are identified as what is eligible for the rent and what isn't eligible for the rent. And that is too convoluted. And I just, I know it's up to you. You have to make a policy decision. We all agree that this building, the Aiken House, is not to be compared to the Schoolhouse nor the Southworth, old Southworth Library. The buildings are different. And the missions are different. And so I feel it is my hope and my expectation that for this one-year lease, you will agree to the $1 rent for the year and the term, which is from October to October. And I am happy to give you all the reports that I put together because that's what I do. I keep track of everything, except my own time, by the way. So this is what I'm hoping that the Select Board will consider doing for us on this one-year lease.
So Diane, if you could please indulge me. You said that it's not true. I'm reading under number four, the rent and the leasing may reduce any given annual rental payment by offsetting any of the following specific costs. This is the same language that everyone else has. So the services that you're providing by offering activities which people come to, you get to state what you might charge them.
We don't.
Right. But you can state that you could charge them.
That's not our philosophy.
But that has value to what you're offering.
We don't, we don't want you to charge, yeah. And you, if you charged, you wouldn't get the credit anyways. The idea is if you held an event that 50 people attend and hypothetically that were valued at $10 a person, well, now that's credit of $500.
The reason we don't charge for events is because this house was funded by the town through CPA funds. And we feel that it's more important for people to be able to come to our events. Yes, they are worth something. But for us, we feel it's more valuable if we offer our, our events or what, house tours, whatever.
But those are the same things that are offered at the other two sites and are not charged for, but are data points to be put towards their rent.
I'm sorry, but I don't feel they're comparable to the Aiken House. Therefore, if that, that rent is just not acceptable to us. But we will work with the, we will give the town all the information to satisfy the town that we have done or we do what we say we're going to do. And that has value. So all we would like for this one-year lease is the $1 to sign the lease and the term of October to October. And if you read that convoluted language under the rent amount, it's confusing. And I've already given Cody as much feedback as I possibly can handle that that language, at the very least, should be modified because it isn't just, boom, in-kind services. There you have it. It's about, this is excluded, that's not included. I mean, it just makes no sense. And thank you for the opportunity to speak about this because we've waited for this for a long time to appear in front of the Select Board.
Well, I'm sorry that it was five years. We had a different administration at that time and we had no idea, I personally had no idea that it had been requested. Mr. Mickelson.
Ms. Gilbert, we think your time is worth something. That's the whole idea of this. Your valuable time that you give to this property has a dollar value. And at some point during a period of a year, it might be more than $5,000. But we're not going to send you a bill for $5,000. So I don't understand why you, you, I don't, I don't, I don't want to sound, not appreciative of what you do, but the $1, as opposed to the $5,000 that we're not going to send you a bill for, I don't think, one thing has nothing to do with the other. You're going to get to use that building for one year, whichever timeframe it is, and give all your time, valuable time and, and knowledge of what that building does for the town and put a value on it and send that in once a year and, and put value of how many times you've been at the building. Whatever time you spend is, is billable hours, let's say.
Attorney Perry?
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but the purpose of the $5,000 amount is to reimburse the town for the value of what it's giving us. That's the understanding. And Mr. Hadad said, well, we calculated that by 25% of the other leases. But I continue to insist that what you're giving us has no economic value and the number $5,000 is not representing anything that you're giving us. Or this is something totally different. This is something to continue arrangement that's been going on for well over a decade in which we have met all the promises we made to the town.
Mr. O'Neill.
So one of the other things I, I think that is missing is the amount of time and energy it takes to, to run a 501(c)(3). Not, not a lot of fun. There's a lot of reporting and it's, it's just simply, you know, a lot of work. It's, it's really not, we're not able to take that amount of work and energy into consideration in a lease. I happen to agree that the commercial viability of that, of that property is, is equal to zero. The, the one question I had, Diane, though, is the, the number, can you give me an idea of annually? Because I honestly don't know. I haven't had the, the opportunity to actually watch it. But I just, I just watched, my wife's going to laugh if she's watching, which she probably isn't, but the John Adams documentary. And the first thing I thought of was that house. Unbelievable. So I, I'm really looking forward to going to see it. However, the number of projects, programs that you run from that one property, say, on an average year, and what are they? If, if you don't mind.
Here's the problem. It's not just about the programs, as I've stated before. My time, let's use me. Because as I've said before, I don't even take into consideration my time. And I never have. I just do it because it's a labor of love. But my time is spent, yes, running a 501(c)(3), doing the fundraising, doing a lot of things associated with running the Aiken House and our 501(c)(3). But that also includes, like, for example, that CPA project that's going in front of town meeting tomorrow. I put that together. And in that package includes backup for the CPC that illustrated how much has been spent on the house for improvements and also, like, one-time charges. So that report, and I don't have it with me, I'm sorry, but that report included one-time expenses and also, you know, continuing operational expenses for the house. So it's about organi, you know, doing the landscaping on the property and doing, you know, planting heritage apple trees. That ties in with the Aiken legacy because they had an orchard, to putting together that CPA project, which has more information on there than you can, and I bet none of you have seen that. I've discussed it with Cody and I did indicate that it was available through CPA. And I'm happy to share that anytime. So it's not just events, it's about the house. And there is nobody around that will want to take that kind of labor-intensive job. So the town needs to consider, well, if it's not DHPT, who will it be? And I just have to. And I just have to emphasize that because we can walk away from this. But I've invested so much, and as others on our board, that I made a commitment. We met our commitments from day one. We did everything we were supposed to do, and yet it's never enough. And I have invited people, I know Stan visited the house a few years ago.
I've been there.
And when were you there? You know, we probably saw each other or not?
Yes, early on. I was, at the time, the principal of Cushman School and I was trying to work with you to get field trips for our students to visit the house as a historic.
Yeah, that was a long time ago because that was, that was the time when we hadn't initiated phase three of the interior restoration. So we've done a lot of work with the house since then. But I do recall hosting students to come to the Aiken House at that time. But that's like over 10 years ago.
I have seen your packet and I don't know if we had all seen it early on. That included all of the initial whale documentation as far back as 2006. So I have seen all of your documentation. But I will say, Diane, and I totally understand, and I guess we're at a point to agree to disagree, we are saying on this board that we value your time. I'm looking at Diane Gilbert, whether you were, you know, at any point, pick an age, any age, we would say, okay, you just stated about longevity. My hope is that there's someone on your board that's going to pick up this flag when Diane Gilbert is no longer able to pick up this flag.
Well, is that part of your deliberations on giving us a one-year lease?
Not at all. It's part of what I'm tasking you and your board because in the future, it's going to be someone else at that microphone that comes and says, this is why we need to continue with this project.
Right.
We don't want it not to happen and we don't want, we don't want to see this go into disrepair because there's no one taking this up. But I personally feel that all the things that you've listed, as Stan said, that has value and that moves in. So when you have the encampment, there's a rental charge to the encampment that is, what I'm saying, Diane, is that's how you get to your $5,000.
I know how to get to the $5,000. It's the principle of the thing.
Well, okay. Mr. Tattelbaum.
Diane, your passion for history, I appreciate. I'm an historian myself. I love a history. I understand the history of that house. You put a lot of time in there. We don't get compensated for our work either, as you know. We all do this work because we put our time into the town. You do it there, it's appreciated. You've already said that you can account for the $5,000 easily. We have a responsibility. We don't know the long-term cost of the CPA funds that's going to go into that building. We have no idea what's required. It's going to take a long-term study and a proposals by you and your board to tell us what the plan is for that building. Not only with the plan to keep it up and going, but also the activities, et cetera. The principle is, at this point, I think is irrelevant. You've already said you'd come up with a $5,000 in compensation, do it, and in the next year, come up and come back to us and say, here's our short and long-term plan. Here's what our board is going to propose. And we can then revisit it with more detail and with a plan to know when and if you're going to ask for more money for CPA funding, which is Town of Dartmouth money. We can then know where it is, where it's going, how much it's going to be down the road because you know better than all of us. It's going to require a lot of money to keep that building afloat, keep it going because it's old. Is that unreasonable to ask for?
Well, I don't think it's, I don't think we're being unreasonable by...
That wasn't my question. Are we being unreasonable for one year so we can then make a plan going down the road that makes sense for everybody so that we have a long-term plan? And you have a long-term plan as to what your board and plan's going to be and how long you want to keep doing it. Is that unreasonable for us to ask?
No, it isn't. But I will say that determining our succession plan, I maintain, is the responsibility of the Town of Dartmouth.
Okay.
Which owns this property.
That may be the case, it's okay. If that's the case in a year from today, then tell us. We need to know what the short and long-term plan, and if you think that it's our responsibility, fine. Then we'll take charge.
I would say it's a joint responsibility.
Okay, whatever you say to us.
Because you rely on us for the information because it's clear that you guys don't pay as much attention to the Aiken House as we do. So that's understandable. I would appreciate more attention in other ways, but...
I'm going to guarantee you, in a year from today, that we end up with a plan that's short and long-term and you tell us what your activities and your classes and what the billing is going to look like. You'll get a lot more interest than we have now, but we don't know much about it.
Yeah, because I've invited you and you don't come.
It's not about an invitation. It's about a plan that has some teeth to it.
And I resent the fact that you think we don't have plans.
I didn't say you didn't have one. I was saying a year from today, we have one that's so written that we can sign it and move on.
Yeah, without going through this RFP BS.
Okay.
Mr. McDonald.
Couple of points. Number one, we can argue about the 30B, but ultimately, it's the Attorney General who's going to have to decide whether or not this has to go through the RFP process. So it doesn't make a difference. We can swing it one way or another. There was a comment that was made that the town hasn't done anything on this. If I recall correctly, approximately over, well over $600,000 was given by CPA funds for this project. So I think that's the significant impact that the town has made into the property. And you said, Attorney Perry said that the property has absolutely no value. Well, then, our assessors are pretty much wrong because they value the property at $402,600. But that's neither here nor there. Look, I'm willing to, I'm willing to go with the $1 for the next year, okay? But, I mean...
Extension.
Just for the extension. The thing is, is that, one of the things is that, you know, the lease does require you put insurance on the building.
We have some.
Okay.
But...
But the cost of that insurance is eligible to be offset on the rent. It's right here. It says it right there.
I know, I know that, but there are other things in that language that...
Oh, like the building maintenance, like, in fact, we'll just read it.
Like the maintenance doesn't count.
I mean, we'll read it right here. It said, "The leasing may reduce any given annual rental payment by offsetting any of the following specific costs, but only so long as said costs were incurred in accordance with this lease agreement. Insurance costs for the building or property, costs for repairs and improvements to the building or property, and costs for providing educational, cultural activities and programs to the public in the building. But excluding the costs of the leasing, including without limitations, cost of general maintenance of the building or property, consultant costs, travel and meeting costs, employee costs, and any other costs typically associated with running a lawful nonprofit entity shall not be eligible." So there is, whether or not you agree, we agree, whether the state says that the lease has to be under 30B and the procurement process has to be made, I'm willing to extend the lease for one year through the October. In fact, I'm going to make it right now. I make a motion that we extend the lease through October 31st, 2026 for the sum of $1. And that after that, during this time, because we have a new administration, we have a new town administrator, that discussions on a future lease going forward be made. Now, the only other thing I have a concern is, okay, is we're discussing this, but the lease is with the Historical Commission. Why are we discussing this? Even though I know we're stewards of the town and that's it. The lease should be with the Town, the Select Board.
Just technically, they are...
I know technically.
Owner on record. So it's been, the board has approved and then recommended and then the Historical Commission makes the actual...
I'm just saying, it's one of those little odd things that are just kind of like, hmm.
Well, let me just explain how that is, though. I did mention the CPA funds in my, you know, the town has done nothing. Taxpayers have supported this through their CPA funding approval. But here's what's bizarre about the Historical Commission being in the mix here because I challenged that going back to 2019. Whenever this was put before, a town meeting warned that it should be the Historical Commission. That never made any sense to me. Secondly, when Cody and I discussed this, I said, have you contacted the Historical Commission so that they could be in this loop before the Select Board gets the opportunity to sign off? And the answer was no. I've discussed it with members of the Historical Commission because I like to cover all my bases. So you raise a legitimate point that never made any sense because you are the policymakers and the signatories. And I think with the Historical Commission, it's pro forma, more than anything else.
Let me just add on that signal, but actually, the general laws are pretty clear. There's only one entity that can do lease of public buildings, except for school buildings, and that's the Board of Selectmen by statute. And it can be up to 10 years. There is no real basis to try to alter that by a vote at town meeting. It's pretty clear. So that's why we did it with the Board of Selectmen in the beginning.
So the motion was to extend the current lease for one year for the dollar. Second.
Through October 31st, 2026.
Twenty-six.
So we have a motion on the floor?
I have a comment.
Question on the motion?
I think we have a responsibility to our other lessees to be consistent. We've made a dramatic change to compensate the fact that this is a different kind of property. You've already said that you can easily, you can easily account for the $5,000. And then, why should we not be responsible to those other groups and also know that we have a consistent lease that has the same language? So there's no burden because you said you can cover those dollars. Now, what we do a year from today, it's a totally different situation. But I think we owe it to those other groups to be consistent. And we should leave it as it is and we've made a lot of compensation, we've made an adjustment because you deserve an adjustment. We did it.
Madam Chairman, if this was a new lease, if this was a new lease, yes, I agree with Mr. Tattelbaum. But this is an extension of the existing lease.
Which was wrong. Wrong in the sense that we need to, we did it with the Cultural Center. We went over and over to make sure we were consistent. We did it with, we've done it to be consistent. And why not keep it that way, especially where you've said you can compensate easily for the $5,000? So we're consistent. We can't go to any other organization that we were not.
So we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, that's my comment.
And so, okay, so we have a motion on the floor. So I'm going to say, if you are in favor of extending the lease for one year, as stated, until October 31st, 2026, for $1, say aye.
Aye.
If you're not in favor of that, say aye now. Aye.
It'll be nay.
Or nay, nay.
Nay.
Mr. Mickelson, I didn't...
I'm in favor of the dollar.
You're in favor of the dollar. So the favor of the dollar passes three to two.
Okay, so I didn't hear Chris's vote.
I seconded the motion.
So the motion passes for $1, so we can move forward.
Thank you. I wanted this for the record.
For the record.
Yes.
We're moving forward, which tomorrow at town meeting, then you will have a lease in hand.
It's been recommended today.
It's been recommended, okay.
With the Select Board's approval.
And I'd certainly be happy...
For the one year.
I'd certainly be happy to work with the town administrator to get an opinion from the Inspector General.
We have our own legal counsel that I'm glad they work with.
Well, we'll get our own opinion too.
Well, that's fine, but just keep in mind as we move forward, in preparation of the following year.
I also have an obligation to the town, so...
Right, but I'm just recommending to your organization that to look at this currently worded lease and look at the ways that you may have to report in the future and prepare yourself for that.
Right, and we'll also prepare ourselves to negotiate back and forth. That's the name of the game, isn't it?
Thank you. What we have in mind is to perhaps a 10-year lease with a long-term commitment on our part as to a specific program that will take place over the next 10 years. And we think that's something that we can negotiate successfully with the town.
Great.
Great.
Yeah, I'll only be 84.
All right, so moving down our agenda.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Town administrators update.
Yes, just a couple of things. Excited to announce that the Mendez Montero House, through the Dartmouth Housing Authority, will have its ribbon-cutting ceremony on October 29th. As you know, the town has invested significant dollars into this project. The Select Board appropriated $1 million of ARPA funds previously and community preservation funds to the tune of another $1 million were appropriated for this project. So the town has put forward $2 million for this project, which is substantial. This will house 10 individuals once fully housed. And then, just the other update I have is obviously town meeting tomorrow evening. I do, I did tentatively schedule a meeting of the board for 6:30. If we feel it's necessary for any sort of town meeting prep, it's something we can discuss and you guys can decide, but I did schedule it and post an agenda.
Is that the high school, correct?
Yes, it is.
At the high school. Thank you for that. All right, moving into next, any old proposed town projects?
No, that will have that.
That's going to be monthly, so we've already discussed that. All business, anything on the list?
No new ones.
Our minutes. So I took a look at September 20, the minutes of September 29th. Let me just turn back to those. And I found that within the document, the superintendent of schools' last name is misspelt consistently. Instead of Saba, S-A-B-A, it is Sabra, S-A-B-R-A.
At least it's consistent.
It was consistent throughout, but I just wanted to make sure. And also, it said, as I read through the town meeting articles, it was unanimous and there were four of us that night. It did, it did say that Mr. McDonald was not here. I also read through October 6th and I did not find any errors. I don't know if anyone else looked and found anything? All right, so I'd like to move both the minute meetings of September 29th, 2025 with the...
Can we have separate votes, please?
Sure. I'll move September 29th, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Second. Excellent, all in favor, say aye. Aye, with that one change. Abstaining, Mr. McDonald's abstaining. He was not present at that meeting. Now, for the meeting minutes of October 6th, 2025.
Moved.
To approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And seconded, all in favor of that one?
Aye.
Aye, excellent. All right, moving on. Lost my meeting. Select Board update, anything from Mr. O'Neal?
Pass.
Mr. McDonald?
Nope.
Mr. Mickelson?
We have a meeting, a ZBA meeting Thursday night?
Yes, we do.
6 o'clock, Town Hall, ZBA. And next, the lawn signs are still out there and they're multiplying. They're like, no one pays any attention, nor do they have any respect for our town. I'm going to have a long talk with our town inspector, housing inspector, and our DPW. And I'm going to try to start removing them, especially the ones that are, that need ladders to get to them. And start removing them. From that point, I also think that we should start sending emails or phone calls to these offenders.
So if a person has had... So if, if a person has had work done on their house or they're supporting something and they have a yard sign, that sign should not be on the curb. You have to move that sign...
Your property.
Into your property. So right at the curb is really not your property. So move your lawn sign or beware, it will be, it will be picked up at some point. So keep that in mind. We're also trying to take care of those signs that nobody belongs to and are on various public ways.
Do we have access to penalize people legally, find them?
On the issue, Mr. Mickelson, I was in contact with the Community Corrections Person, the liaison for this area, and they'd be more than willing to go around to specific areas and take those off the utility poles. If you can get us some locations and with the okay of the town administrator.
Every utility pole on the corner of Route 6.
So Stan's saying they can contact him directly if you'd like.
Okay.
The fact that, the fact that we take them down doesn't solve the problem. Can we, can we, can we notify these people we took them down? If they go back up again, there'll be a fine. Are we able to do that?
For the most part, most of those signs is strictly a phone number. There's no company name to them, so you have to, you have to investigate who belongs to that phone number.
All the number.
Yes, pretty much most of them.
And the business, yeah.
I mean, I mean, let's put it this way. House washing is a phone number.
The gutter guy's booming since the last meeting.
At the end of the day...
House washing, you know, that. I mean, very, very few signs have an actual company name on them. I mean, like the poop squad, okay? Poop squad is a franchise, okay? So there's a local franchise who goes around picking up dog poop.
Mr. Poop.
Good for them.
So great. Call them up and tell them we took them down.
But yeah, but that's just it. But the thing, the problem is, the other thing is, is there was a mention of when you have work done on your house, if XYZ Roofing Company is doing your roof and they want to put out a sign on it, those signs I am not concerned about. The ones I'm concerned about are the ones that are on town property that are on the utility poles or somebody actually spends the time to put a wooden bracket on a pole for some kind of affair in September and the sign is still up there with the bracket. Those are the ones that are the most problematic. You know, the ones, you know, the guy doing your roof is just, you know, most of the times, you're going to keep it there while, while he's doing the roof and keep it there a week or two later, you know? And then it's, the homeowner's going to end up taking it out because the homeowner's not going to want to see it.
I suggest somebody or people that are watching all 10,000 people, to take, take a look on, on a whole mall road and go on either, head north or south and you will see 100 signs on those telephone poles on each side of the street, 100 signs.
But are we going to keep talking about this every week or are we going to try to solve the problem?
I just solved it for you.
What did you say?
Chris got someone who's willing to, willing to take them down.
Community Corrections Liaison has said that they can, they can do that work for us if need be. They just need a parameter of locations where they could be sent.
Actually, they can start with the corrections.
Recycle them.
They can start with the corrections.
In the past, Mr. Mickelson has brought the signs here and then I take them to be recycled. So they can do that.
How does that stop the signs from keep going up?
We realize that. We are going to look into with our...
The building commissioner has the ability to find them.
To find them. The building commissioner is, we're going to talk, Cody's going to have a conversation with the building commissioner. And what we said is, unfortunately, it's, it will take time to figure out...
There's eight or 10 companies that put signs all over town. They're everywhere. You call those people and tell them, either we take them or they do, oh, we're going to find them. And I guarantee, the one or two that are here on houses here and there, okay, they're bad, but there's eight or 10 that put them everywhere and they put them up high. Those are the ones we want to get rid of and penalize them. We're going to talk about it again next time?
Only if one of my friends on the board brings it up.
The asphalt company is in Rhode Island because I called them.
The asphalt company? That's not the word I thought you said.
I called them.
I'm sorry.
What did you say?
Asphalt.
That's what I thought you said.
Yes, okay. For the Select Board updates, Mr. Mickelson, anything?
I have no more.
Nothing?
Nothing, zero.
Okay.
One quick comment on, on water quality. I talked with, Cody and I had conversations within the day he started and we agreed that once we turned town meeting, he's done a fantastic job getting us ready, done, I think we can turn the corner and get more aggressive. We've got people out there who want to become active in overall water quality and establish a program and a, and a group that can go forward, especially with the great thing that Mr. Maki did for us today. It's a great springboard to get this thing going in a way that affects water quality all over town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will review with you the water quality charge that we currently have on the books.
We can bring it back at a November meeting.
All right, I know that Mr. Mickelson made a comment about the ZBA meeting on Thursday, October 23rd. That is the meeting that is going to deal specifically with the 40B Tucker Road project. Just so that everyone knows, the ZBA meeting that will deal with the project being proposed on Old Westport Road is slated to happen on October 30th with the ZBA. Other than that, tomorrow is town meeting and so all town meeting members that are out there with your packet, tonight's the night if you haven't already opened it.
Open it.
Open it. I don't want to hear that soul-sucking sound tomorrow at the meeting.
People don't do that.
So look at that tonight. Open it out of my earshot, I'll tell you right now. I'll call you out. Other than that, before we, as a Select Board, meet again, which our next meeting is November 3rd, we have town meeting, we have a number of activities happening, including lots of trick-or-treating and trunk-or-treating. So please watch out, it's getting, it's darker and darker every day out there, so please watch out for our kiddos and deer because that's on, we've been reminded of that.
Right.
On that note...
Motion to adjourn.
Is there, do we want to meet at 6:30 tomorrow before town meeting?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
I'll be there before, anyway, so...
No, just in case anything that came tonight, I posted as a...
HU wants to bring in signs from the telephone poles and we can, we can have a meeting on this.
Okay, sorry. Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by, seconded by Mr. McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.